All right, it's six thirty. We'll bring this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item is reading approval of minutes from the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four Rader Council meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So move.
Second, thank you, Frank. Thank you, Janine. All right, minutes are approved. Uh, next, reading approval of the minutes from the, uh, August twenty ninth, twenty twenty four workshop. So we have not had a chance, am I right, that we have not had a chance yet to send those out? So we will just move that to the next council meeting. It's not ready yet. All right, next item on the agenda is a presentation by Kelly Gano with the Family Support Center.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Gano, and I am the Director of the Raleigh County Family Support Center. Raleigh County Family Support Center operates the Raleigh County Prevention Coalition. I've provided counsel with information about the Family Support Center, but today we're going to talk more about the Prevention Coalition. I wanted to give you some information about myself so that you can understand why the work of the Family Support Center and the Prevention Coalition is so important to me. I was born in Baltimore and raised in New Hampshire by my grandparents and have lived in Beckley on and off since two thousand and four, when my grandmother moved here from, following her divorce from her husband. We moved here in the middle of my sixth grade year. In New Hampshire, sixth grade is in an elementary school, whereas here, sixth grade is in middle school. One Friday, I was an elementary school student, and on Monday, I woke up a middle schooler. With a grieving and stressed-out grandparent, I was on my own to navigate this new world. In two thousand and six, at fifteen, I got my first job pushing buggies at the Kroger on Harper Road. All of my money was given to my grandmother to support the household as she was unable to work and only received a little bit of social security. My grandmother was manipulative, emotionally abusive, and neglectful. In my eighth grade year at Park Middle School, I found my niche, running track. The coaches, Ms. Pam Moore and Ms. Angie Colacerto, were champions in making sure that I made it out of school alive. Once I started high school, I was alone again to navigate the world as they did not follow me. I had found some friends who would sit in the back of the music class with me, and we did drugs that we had no idea what they were. My grandmother struggled to care for me, and we had social workers from DHHR in and out of the home all the time. She would send me to live with my mother in Baltimore and then bring me back to West Virginia to work, and then send me back when it met her, bring me back when it met her agenda. Living in Baltimore was an unsafe situation for me and my siblings. My mother had sent me to deal drugs for her and had people in and out of the house all hours of the day and night while I slept in a closet. There are roaches in the kitchen, and often we would go without eating because there was no food or the food that was available had bugs in it. After realizing I could not live like this anymore, the final time my grandmother had sent me to Baltimore, I had made arrangements from a couple of friends to come back to West Virginia. In two thousand and eight, the Beckley Police Department picked me up from school as I was considered a runaway. I remember the day that they picked me up, they had an officer at every exit of that school. They took me to the old police station where I sat in the interview room for what felt like hours on hours, until DHHR social worker could come get me, and my grandmother signed her rights away in the office. And that is where I began my journey through foster care. I aged out of foster care and graduated with my bachelor's degree in social work in two thousand and fourteen and my master's in social work in two thousand and fifteen. I've been with Raleigh County Family Support Center and Prevention Coalition for the past two years, and prior to this, I worked in Foster Care Agency for eight years. The Prevention Coalition has been working in this community since two thousand and sixteen, long before I even came along, to bring awareness for the need to prevent our youth from engaging in substance use. The Prevention Coalition is made up of community volunteers who seek change, who want to put our youth to live a life of happiness, success, and purpose. Counsel has been provided with PowerPoint, and I'll talk about, a little bit about what prevention is and why it's important. On page four, you'll see the definitions. At the top, the first definition is CADCA, the Coalition Anti-Drug Coalition of America. They are contracted with the Federal Goverment to provide consultation and support services to local coalitions. They have what is called a National Coalition Academy, which Raleigh County Prevention Coalition graduated from that in January twenty twenty-three. The National Coalition Academy is a three-week, three-week intensive boot camp about the strategic prevention framework, which is also listed on your list of definitions. They talk about assessment, uh, community capacity, planning, implementation, and evaluation of your action plan. On the next page, we define what a coalition is. A formal voluntary, voluntary arrangement for collaboration among groups or sectors of a community in which each group retains its identity but all agree to work together toward a goal of safe, healthy, and a drug-free community. The next page lists the different sectors that are, um, our, a coalition is made up of. For the audience, I'll read it. It's made up of a government, law enforcement, healthcare, education, a religious or fraternal organization, youth, parents, the media, civic or volunteer organization, businesses, youth-serving organizations, substance use organizations, senior citizens, courts, probation, higher education, human and social service providers, childcare providers, and cultural groups and organizations. On the next page, you'll see the continuum of care. So this was developed by the National Research Council and Institute of Medicine. Continuum of care, um, is the promotion, so before anything is even a problem, that is where work takes place. Prevention, so when we've identified a problem such as substance use and opioid crisis, we want to prevent, uh, engagement in that. Treatment is after that there is a problem. So when there's a, like a diagnosis, um, of substance use disorder, treatment obviously would, um, be the intervention. And then recovery, so after treatment has taken place and there needs to be some, um, something to sustain that treatment, that's what recovery is. So the Prevention Coalition primarily works, um, aims to work in prevention. We do support evidence-based strategies of the entire commu-, uh, continuum of care. I summarize the next five pages. So if you go to the page, it says comprehensive strategies and population level change. I didn't number them to make it really, really difficult for you guys. It's two blue boxes. So there are two strategies, um, to make population level change. There are environmental focused and individual focused. You can't have one without the other. Environmental focus talks about, um, different policies, um, things that affect the entire community. Instituting guidelines, ordinances, restrictions, drug courts. An individual focused are more targeted towards individuals, um, like if you do a one-on-one tutoring or if you do one-on-one counseling, that's really what an individual, um, focus is. But if you focus too much on the, turn the page, if you focus too much on the individual, you exhaust your resources because you have different resources. So you have family, school, you know, you've got your church community, healthcare providers, all working on an individual. Whereas you could take regulations, um, norms and availability of resources and structure that into an overall policy so that, um, youth can fall in line kind of with what the norms are. So if you make a drug-free community the norm, then, um, the more likely they are to fall into that. Seven strategies for curating effective community change, providing information, making sure everybody has awareness, has the correct information, um, building, enhancing skills. So are you, we have a youth life, uh, youth drop-in center over in Beckley. Uh, we do tutoring and life skills, um, and relationship building, so all of those, uh, strategies. Providing support for prevention activities, so dare, if we were to provide support to dare, um, things that are already in place, that's what that is, reducing barriers, so helping with transportation, coordination of services, linkage, environmental changes. So clean air policies, um, murals, making your environment look, um, like you're happy to be here, like you just love it. Changing your consequences. So one of the things that we actually, um, receive feedback from youth in this community is that they don't feel like that there's a point, uh, to doing the right thing because we pour resources into people who do the wrong thing and do not reward enough for the people who are doing the right thing. Which I thought was a profound, insightful statement from youth who live here. Educating and informing about policies, we'll be coming to counsel about some of those things. Strategic prevention framework, so this just talks about any prevention training you ever go to. We'll talk about the spiff flower, and it talks about the things that we talked about with CADCA, just the assessment, the capacity, planning, implementation, and valuation, making sure that you know why you are doing what you're doing. So the Raleigh County Prevention Coalition, there is a timeline of how we got here. A list of our current Board of Directors, Danielle Stewart, who we all know, Natalie Coots, Shannon Gray, Kelly Elkins, Mike Horton, Marie Bechtel, Marilyn Hall, Amanda Hammonds, I know I saw her, and Reverend Susan Kletter. We do currently have four positions open for a media person and a law enforcement, and then two, um, other community members. On the last page is a list of the different, um, activities we do as it relates to the seven strategies. This county has had such a potential to flourish and is a place for people to want to come to visit or to raise their families. When I look back at the different challenges throughout my lifetime, I always think about who believed in me and who believed there was more than I was getting out of life. There are so many, and I am grateful to have built an array of villages over time and appreciate their love and unwavering support. What if we all got to tell a story of love, commitment, and unwavering support for the fifteen thousand children who live in this county? What if they got to say, because of you, I didn't get to, I didn't get to be involved in that activity, or because of you, I kept going? We, as a county, and we, as the city of Beckley, and we as a community, have the opportunity to make this a reality. On your brochure, there is a quote, says, "There comes a point where we need to stop just pulling people out of the river, and we need to go upstream and find out why they're falling in." Beginning in spring twenty twenty-three, this community has collected information, completing surveys, talked to youth, talking to those who work with youth to understand what is happening with youth in schools and in our community as it relates to substance use. The folks you see standing, oh, all, can all the coalition members stand up? Anybody who is supported in partnership with the coalition, or is it coalition board member? Kristen and Chris, that's you two. Christina, all, all of you. Folks that you see standing here and the folks who are not in attendance because they are out making a world a better place, decided to go upstream and to understand why we're falling in the river. Unofficially, and I say unofficially very heavily because we still have to sign the contract. Raleigh County, by the way of the Raleigh County Prevention Coalition, has been awarded the Drug-Free Communities Grant through the CDC. This is a five-to-ten-year, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar per year grant that allows the community to continue to work together to implement focused strategies to prevent youth substance use. The strategies listed on the front, inside of your brochure will be the work that we will be able to do together. Through the next five to ten years, we will work collaboratively, collaboratively with the city of Beckley and others in Raleigh County to bring evidence-based strategies like policy changes, environmental changes, additional resources that will support our youth and prevent their engagement with substance use. Thank you for your time.
So, um, and then I'll ask if anybody else has any questions, but is this just for, for kids or is this like for young adults? Is it for anyone in Raleigh County? Is it?
It's, so it's for anybody in Raleigh, it's for youth in Raleigh County.
Is it more focused toward kids or is it just broad? So, are you, are you like in the schools like here in Raleigh County or how do you all, I guess, I mean, the prevention part sounds great. Everybody wants to keep their kid, their neighbor's kid off drugs and everything else. But what, like, are you in this, like, how, how, what's your, like, give me some examples of what, how you reach a kid?
Sure.
Or is it once they've already kind of slipped and?
So prevention is about before they've slipped. So we have our youth drop-in center, um, which this grant will get to be able to continue to provide, um, the youth drop-in center over in East Beckley. So it's open currently on Tuesdays, but this grant will be able to expand two to three days work a week. And so that provides a safe space for youth to be able to just drop in, get help with their homework. We provide snacks, they love coming in for the snacks. They get to use the computers, they get help with their homework. We have a coalition member, Kelly Elkins, she is trained in Catch My Breath, which is an anti-vaping curriculum. And so she is able to train the teachers on that curriculum so that they don't have to miss, uh, either time at home or leave school to have a substitute come in. So she can train them right here in the county. Um, we set up, we coordinate events, we, um, go do presentations. We went to Liberty last year, year back, year before, um, and did a presentation on, to, to the kids. So, um, we're working with Park Middle School on doing like a bathroom upgrade, where you can have positive affirmations painted in the bathroom. It's where all the kids kind of go to all their, their self-esteem, they're looking in the mirror, um, they're making unhealthy choices. So we're just working with them to do the different kind of changes. There's di-, there's different, there's different strategies there.
What, like, when you say presentation, like, without getting too involved in it, like?
So talking to youth about, um, the effects of substance use, um, coping strategies for, um, okay, yeah, I usually have a big mouth, I usually don't need it. So like coping strategy, strategies for like mental health challenges, resources that are available if they were to, um, have any mental health, uh, crises. We, do we do suicide prevention, educate them on those resources that are available? It's different depending on what the ask is and depending on what the age is. Like, we wouldn't go into a third-grade classroom and be like, hey, guess what? We would do age-appropriate conversations. Does that answer your question?
Have you approached this to the Raleigh County School System?
So we've talked to schools individually, so like we work with Park, um, we work really closely with community and schools. So it's, it's really on a, uh, school-by-school basis.
What about Chief Lee, Chief Bailey, the DARE program? Are you all doing the DARE program in the schools? What age groups? Do you know? Do you all work along with them, with the DARE program?
We do not currently, but we're not against it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So how effective do you, I mean, do you feel like the presentations, like, does it make a difference? Do you think the kids, like, pay attention to it? Is it something that you all think's effective or?
So the presentations isn't all of what we do, um, and it's probably less of the, less of the strategies that we do. We have Students Against Destructive Decisions, which is an out-of-school, um, program where the, we get the kids involved in the community. I don't know how we would measure effectiveness unless we were doing like a, a survey before and after. On the effectiveness of our presentations, um, but with the strategic prevention framework, we're not looking to waste any time because everybody's a volunteer, except for right now, me. But everybody is part of the coalition is a volunteer, so nobody's looking to waste their volunteer time doing something that's ineffective.
Do you all currently have an office?
Yeah, so, um, St. Stephen's Episcopal has been super kind to us and lets us use, um, several of her, the rooms downstairs, um, as well as the Family Support Center. We kind of share that space. Um, and then the Youth Drop-In Center over in East Beckley, and then the Family Support Center does work out of, um, Sophia.
So the Youth Drop-In Center, like, just ballpark, how many kids you think stop in there per week?
That is, that depends. Some days, there are like twenty-two kids in that little room, and some days, there are zero kids in that room. It just, it truly depends. And you, and there's no way to gauge who is coming in and who is not, there's not a pattern to it.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, the first reading of ordinance authorizing Pine Crest Sewer easement. I'll turn it over to Mr. Fow for more on that.
Yes, tonight is first reading of this ordinance. If it passes tonight, uh, second reading will occur on the twenty-fourth of this month. Uh, this is a, a fairly simple ordinance. What it does is it, uh, grants in effect an easement from the city of Beckley to the sanitary board, for the purpose of performing public utility work on this property. Property is located between South Eisenhower Drive and Clarence W. Metta's Memorial Boulevard. And at this time, I'll read the ordinance by title and then ask, uh, the mayor to, to call for a motion and a vote. It's titled, "Ordinance Authorizing City of Beckley to Grant and Convey to Beckley Sanitary Board an easement and right-of-way over, across, and through certain real estate of City of Beckley between South Eisenhower Drive and Clarence W. Metta's Memorial Boulevard." Mayor?
All right, very good. May I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading?
Still move.
Second? Any questions or comments for Mr. Fow? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right, thank you, counsel. Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda, first reading of ordinance authorizing City of Beckley to convey one thirty-one point four-seven acres of real estate, more or less, located in the Pine Crest Industrial Park in Beckley, Raleigh County, West Virginia, to the Raleigh County Commission for the Purpose of Economic Development of this real estate. So again, I will turn it over to Mr. Fow for more.
Thanks, sir. Uh, yes, uh, once again, I will read this ordinance by title. Uh, tonight is first reading. If approved tonight, it will be a second reading and a public hearing, uh, on the twenty-fourth day of September. And what this ordinance does is it authorizes the city of Beckley to convey the property that's basically known as the Pine Crest Industrial Park, um, to the Raleigh County Commission. Raleigh County Commission has agreed to fund the infrastructure on this property. Therefore, this property will then be, uh, basically pad-ready or ready for development. Something important to keep in mind is there are, uh, covenants and restrictions that control what can be done on this property, and these are of record in the court's office. And so anybody that does any development or uses this property is subject to these covenants and restrictions. Uh, the property consists of one hundred and thirty-one point forty-seven acres. That's approximate, it could be a little bit more, a little bit less. And the title of this property is, "First Reading of Ordinance Authorizing City of Beckley to Convey one hundred and thirty-one point forty-seven acres of real estate, more or less, located in the Pine Crest Industrial Park in Beckley, Raleigh County, West Virginia, to the Raleigh County Commission for the Purpose of Economic Development of this real estate." And as I stated earlier, uh, public comment, uh, will be available for this ordinance if it's to be discussed during the public hearing during second reading on the twenty-fourth of September. And, uh, mayor, turn it back to you and ask that you request a vote or request a motion and a vote.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that due to the information that was, um, learned at the workshop, I made a comment to, um, that I would like to deed the property. I said, "I have a novel idea, let's deed the Board of Education the property where the cross-country course is." And Mr. Rube said, "Well, they don't want it." And I said, "Did you ask?" And he said, "No." Well, in complete transparency to our citizens, I asked, and we received a letter today from Dr. Serena Starcher that says, "This trail has certainly benefited our student athletes. It has been stated that the trail is the most unique trail in the state, given that spectators can view an entire cross-country race. Given the school system's current use of the cross-country trail, I respectfully request the opportunity to discuss the potential transfer of property from the city to the county and its subsequent impact on the trail." My motion is to split the deed and give the Board of Education the cross-country course for youth development, community engagement, and community camaraderie, and to deed the remaining property to the County Commission for Economic Development. And then something, you know, I've been saying, if this is meant to be, you know, I hate that the students and the athletes and the twenty-five hundred and the forty-seven high schools that came to the Chick-fil-A Invitational the other day. But here's a quote from State, Kanaw County State Senator Mike Stewart about economic development just this past week on the Hoppy Kurtzville Show. "I think there is nothing more important to economic development than youth sports." Now granted, he said economic development. That property is for economic development, and I just want to say, I'm, we are a strong council, and I'm trying to do what's best for the city of Beckley, I'm trying to do what's best for our students and for everything that is out there, so that's my motion to, Mr. Fow.
May I ask, I'm assuming that you're, you're wanting to amend the ordinance as presented, is that correct?
May we amend the ordinance as presented?
First need to do is we need to get a motion.
Motion to amend the ordinance?
No, you first need to get a motion presenting, putting this, uh, on the, uh, on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
Excuse me, putting it before the council with a second. And then once it's been moved to be adopted and there's a second, then that'd be the time.
I can't do that now, but even though it's on the agenda?
Not, not before, uh, there's nothing actually to amend until you, uh, until we get it.
So may I get that on the agenda the next time to?
I'm sorry.
We have to get a first and a second on this.
A first and a second on this?
We, we need to get, uh, the ordinance that, that I read.
Okay.
And that, once again, so it's clear, it's first reading of ordinance authorizing City of Beckley to convey one hundred and thirty-one point forty-seven acres of real estate, more or less, located in the Pine Crest Industrial Park in Beckley, Raleigh County, West Virginia, to the Raleigh County Commission for the Purpose of Economic Development of this real estate. Now, what would, would need to occur is there needs to be a motion to adopt this ordinance and then a second. So, mayor, I'd.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do, so may I have a motion to approve the transfer of Pine Crest Industrial Park to the Raleigh County Commission?
So does this mean that the motion, the problem, just on this?
Yes.
It's a motion to put this ordinance before council to vote on.
Right.
And then if there is to be an amendment, then that would be the. And then, if there is to be an amendment, then that would be the time that someone could move to amend the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Thank you, Chip. Any questions or comments?
Now would be the time.
I would like to make a motion to amend the deed to represent that the County Commission will get the rest of the property at Pinecrest for economic development, but that the property where the cross-country course is will be maintained and left alone so that it is the best viewed cross-country course in the state and deed that portion to the Board of Education. And that is my motion.
Do you know how much, how much you're referring to? It's, there needs to be some?
It's thirty acres or less.
Okay, we'll go with that. Uh, there would need to be a second to your motion to amend, and that would need to be debated and voted upon.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll open it up to questions and comments. Sherri, you've already spoke on it. Is there anybody in opposition from what?
I wouldn't say I'm in opposition, per se, but my worry is, is the County Commission on board. If the County Commission's not on board, this property's going to fall through. We're going to go into litigation, and Pinecrest Development's going to get the property back.
Pinecrest. Have you spoken to Raleigh County Commission, Daniel Hall?
Has anybody spoken?
I've spoken with their council. I spoke with Billy Root today.
How does he feel about this?
He indicated that if the city was not prepared to move this along through first reading tonight, he was concerned that the County Commission would opt to back away from the project in its entirety. So that's, uh, they have a time.
We voted to amend, right?
Yes, ma'am, they have a timeframe that, that they are required to meet in order to spend the money that they have spoken to us about. And it's a tight time, timeframe now.
Very interesting.
And I, I must state that if, if the amendment is adopted, then I think what that's going to do is require us to go back to start over because I believe that would be considered a material amendment. You cannot materially amend an ordinance. It has to be a very nominal amendment. But I think removing a, a substantial piece of this property from the original intent here, which was to convey one hundred and thirty-one point forty-seven acres.
But they still have one hundred acres built to develop.
I'm just saying, procedurally, I think, if, if adopted, I think, then, then this ordinance cannot be acted upon. I think it's going to have to start over, and there'd have to be two separate ordinances.
Well, I certainly don't want to do anything to, to make more issues that our constituents have. But at the same time, I didn't want the conversation not to be made aware of that the Board of Education was interested in the property. So going forward, I'm, I will, so he believes that Mr. Rube, which, we go back to the comment, they don't want it. Well, they do want it, and we found out that they want it. So I would think that the County Commissioners would want what's best for their community. I also want, I mean, I believe that when the property was conveyed to us, and Mr. Fow, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm incorrect, that we, it was a part of that agreement that Pinecrest had a debt that the City of Beckley paid, correct?
Correct.
And that was city taxpayer dollars that we paid, three hundred thousand dollars, or give or take. Now, granted, we used city taxpayer dollars to pay that. Now, we're getting lease money back, and we've made that money back. But at the same time, I feel that, and I don't want to beat this to death, but if I didn't put this up for everybody to hear, then I'm not doing my due diligence. And we have a strong council now, and we have a city manager form of government. And I believe that our voices need to be heard. And that's just, however we can go forward, for the betterment of, our youth are our future. And do we talk to the Commissioners so that everybody can be on the same page? I mean, how do we go about so that we have a, a good resolution, Mr. Fow?
There was certainly, this, today was the first time I actually became aware that, that this was occurring. So the only individual I had an opportunity to speak with was Mr. Rube, their attorney. Mr. Rube was very, very concerned about what was occurring. I'm not about to speak on behalf of the County Commission.
I understand.
The only way most likely to go forward would be to, uh, to, I hate to say, you have to kick the can down the road. You're going to have to probably have two separate ordinances. You're going to have to have an agreement of what they would accept. You're going to have to have an agreement of what the City of Beckley is willing to do. Right now, the City of Beckley owns this property. The City of Beckley controls this property.
Correct. And that's why I didn't, that's why I wanted to address it now while it's the City of Beckley property before it goes, it goes forward.
What, what could happen, there could be first reading tonight approved. There's still a second reading and a public hearing that would be scheduled in two weeks. And I would give an opportunity for you to speak to whomever you need to speak with. And, um, as I said, I, I wasn't aware that, that this was occurring tonight. But I, I am concerned if we go forward and adopt an amendment, as you stated, that will defeat the ordinance in its entirety because it will be considered a material amendment to the ordinance.
A wonder question, Mr. Fow, too. Like, how, how long has the city and the county been working on this transition? And, and to make it clear, maybe you could talk more about why, a little bit more clear on why the, it is being transferred over to Raleigh County instead of staying in Beckley's hands?
Well, the reason it's being transferred is right now, the county has ample funds. As we've been advised, to pay for the infrastructure to this property. The infrastructure is required if there's going to be any type of economic development on this property. That, that is the purpose. The city does not have the funds, per se, in an account to be used. So the city, if it chose to develop this property, would most likely have to go through the bonding process, which is a cumbersome, rather expensive process that is not going to occur quickly. And my understanding is the county has to have these funds, or their funds committed by the end of this year, which is December thirty-first.
Three months.
And there are a lot of steps that the county is going to have to take to be in position to, to go forward with the development of the infrastructure. And this, of course, what the, what the advantage is to the city is this property is located in the city limits. The city will receive the tax benefits from any business that operates there. We will see, receive certain taxes from any construction work that is done there. It is, in effect, a, a very good opportunity for the City of Beckley to move forward without having to, to go into further debt to take care of this property. And the county, it, it will help the county. It's my understanding, the County Commission has the funds. This is the type of project that they would be, that they are very interested in spending their funds on. And that, that's, and this transaction is subject to that.
Question. Is this the same property that should have been taken care of a long time ago? That we inherited? I mean, this should have been discussed a long time ago. For whatever reason, it never happened. Now, as usual, now all of a sudden, is, this is what we got to do. Now, is this the part that where the people are going to be building, buildings over there to be rented out? Mr. Fow?
Yes, there's, it's anticipated there will be buildings built on this property.
And hopefully, they are being rented out.
Right. Uh, this is property for economic development. This is to create jobs.
I understand it, but even though you build a building, that don't mean somebody going to rent it out. So I'm...
Well, I, I don't believe the County Commission is planning to, to build the buildings itself. They are going to do the infrastructure so that the property will be ready.
I understand.
And so that businesses come in that...
You, you mentioned, you mentioned a bond, so you, so...
That if the city is intending to develop this property, it most likely would have to go through the bonding process in order to, that's how they would borrow the money to pay for the several million dollars that's going to be required to, to build the infrastructure, to make this property, it's what's called pad-ready, or in other words, ready for a business to come in and, and, and build on that property, on that site. So, um, this is an opportunity, the, that, that the county has asked us to consider, the County Commission, and, um, and so that's why it's presented tonight.
And to be clear, there's, there's a timeline that if, if it's not in place, it's going to go back to the trust, the Pinecrest Trust. So it'll be out of the city's hands, hit the city's hands anyway.
Nobody, nobody is sure where it will go.
Right.
There are some, uh, some unknown questions.
But that is a possibility.
But it is a possibility.
Possibility, there's possibility of litigation.
Yes.
This could get tied up for a long time.
If it gets tied up.
Yeah. We probably need to go back.
I can state that.
We probably need to go back.
You know, I really hate that the students and the athletes are in the crosshairs of a covenant. And I would think that, and this is just me, that we want what's best for our community. And yes, I understand job creation and bricks and mortar and B and O taxes. But I believe there's more to economic development than that. And if, and if it's, and if it's meant to be, then it'll happen that the cross-country course will be, will remain there.
Well, I, I need to point out, I hope everybody understands that when I speak of the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions, these are not covenants and restrictions the city controls or the county controls. These are in, these are law now. They have been adopted, made, made a part of this property. And I don't think there's a way you're going to get around those. Uh, so any development done there is going to have to be done pursuant in, in compliance with these covenants and restrictions, which is going to control the usage of that property. It's not something the City of Beckley or something, the Board of Education or something, the County Commission can control. That, that has already been determined. When the property was deeded to the City of Beckley, it was deeded subject to these covenants and restrictions. We do not have the legal authority or ability to change these.
Okay, so we have two motions, correct, on the floor?
We do.
So how do?
The motion that would need to be acted upon first would be Ms. Hunter's motion to amend the ordinance.
Okay.
And that, that would require, was, there, there was a second to this, so that requires a vote.
Okay. I'm just trying to move things forward.
So we can take a vote on the amendment tonight?
You can take a vote on the amendment. I'm just stating, if the amendment passes, it most likely is going to defeat the ordinance in its entirety because that is going to be considered a material change to this, to this ordinance.
Could we ask if there would be a material change to grant an easement to the county to continue the use for fifty years for the course? Would that be possible?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
A material change to grant an easement to the county to use, to use for the, use for fifty years for the course? Could we not, I, I mean, I'm, I'm being told one thing. We have a groundswell of support that we don't need to belabor this. But I don't want to do anything against the law. I'm trying to do what's best for the community and for our children that are...
And there's one other thing. To be fair, Jenna Belcher sent an email. I mean, it's not like we're going to leave Coach Barber and them out in the cold. I think Jenna Belcher said there was, like, thirty or forty-some acres at least where it was not going to be able to be developed. And we could easily, you know, if had to, down the road, move the cross-country track. I mean, it's not like we're just going to kick y'all to the curb and, and move on and start putting businesses in. So I don't want us to look that way. So even if we vote for this, it's, it's not like we're turning our backs on, on the cross-country. I was out there a couple Saturdays ago, it was packed, I had a great time. But the, the, the bottom line is, from everything I've, everybody I've talked to yesterday and today about this, is the county is just going to walk away from this deal. And then, in most likelihood, it's going to go right back to the Pinecrest Trust. So either, if that happens, everybody loses. And I think this is a super important, I said it two weeks ago when Billy Root was here. I was like, "Listen, we are in the eleventh hour."
Right.
The county has the money right now to get the infrastructure done.
They can do the infrastructure run, that's right, mayor. Do the infrastructure away from the cross-country course. Why can we not? How do you know the County Commissioners want to walk away from that?
Can we table the amendment, Mr. Fow, and then go back to the original?
Or this is still the first reading, right?
What, what would, what would need to happen? I don't know that you should table the amendment without table on the whole ordinance. But you can vote on the, the amendment and see where that goes.
And then we can go back?
And then, then, once that's voted on, if the amendment fails or passes, then we can still vote on the entire ordinance. But I think we're going to have to consider this ordinance no longer applicable if the amendment passes for the very reason I've stated a couple times now. It's a material amendment to the ordinance.
Okay.
And I, I think we need to be very careful about, uh, acting as if somebody can use that property as they choose because there are covenants and restrictions that are, are, are legal, and they, they will be enforced. And I don't think there was ever any, and I've been told by Mr. Baker, who was involved in the original transfer of this property, that, that there was never any agreement that the cross-country team could use this property indefinitely. That they were advised that there was going to be economic development there. And once the economic development occurred, then that would take precedent over the, the use by the team. Now, that, that's what we've been advised.
Mr. Fow, can I just ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to overturn a covenant with an ordinance?
No, ma'am.
I didn't think so.
No, you're, you're not.
That's what I was told, okay.
You most likely would have to go into court. It, it would take a lawsuit in order to overturn a covenant or restriction on the property. An ordinance, we, we don't have the authority, the legal authority to overturn it.
Okay.
The city council doesn't, nor does the County Commission. So... Has there been a, was there a second to the, to Ms. Hunter's?
Was there a second?
I know there was a second to the original ordinance. I didn't know.
Motion to amend. So do we want to take a vote on it?
Need, it needs to be voted upon.
Okay, all those in favor of adding the amendment that Sherri Hunter presented, please say, by saying aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
So the amendment's lost, and that would take a vote, first reading to approve the transfer of Pinecrest. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, so moved, thank you. We'll move on to number seven. Resolution activating the City Council Committee on Parking Facilities. So again, Mr. Fow, I'll turn it back over to you for the parking commission.
Yes, sir. There, there's been some discussion among council members and among the public that the parking committee should be re-instituted. There has been one in the past. We do have a, a city ordinance that, that oversees this. The ordinance doesn't require any special meeting date. What I've done is prepared a resolution to present to council stating that the committee will be reactivated. The committee is, consists, or consists of the seven members of council, the mayor and the city treasurer. And I've stated that these meetings will occur on the second, uh, meeting, second council meeting of each month, which is on the fourth Tuesday. And these meetings, we convene five minutes after the mayor adjourns a regular council meeting. And, and it's a, a resolution that simply brings it back into play. So that would, to pass this, to get the committee up and running again, it would take a motion and a second of this resolution.
All right, very good. So may I have a motion to reactivate the committee for parking facilities?
So moved.
Take a second? Thank you, Janine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no? All right, so moved. Moving on to, uh, next on the agenda, resolution to per, to permit the open burning of vegetation. So I know we got Chief Cofflin here. Mr. Fow, who wants to talk more about that?
It doesn't matter, chief. Do you want to speak? You want me to, how have you? Okay, I, I'll read the pertinent parts of this resolution. This is a resolution that sets the dates and the time that any burning of vegetation can occur within the corporate limits of Beckley. It starts out, "The open burning of vegetation will be allowed in the corporate limits of the City of Beckley between the hours of 5:00 PM and 7:00 AM from the first day of October until the thirty-first day of December, 2024. Prior to the open burning of vegetation, the owner of the property upon which the burning will take place must notify the City of Beckley Fire Department..." will take place must notify the City of Beckley Fire Department. The open burning shall be in such a manner as to not affect the health, safety, comfort, and property of any person. If the open burning is determined to not meet this criteria, then the fire department is authorized to order the open burning to cease. Any prior resolutions of council contrary to these terms are revoked and declared null and void." So those are the terms, chief.
Okay, so there are a couple times a year that people need the ability to burn and there's no open burning allowed in the city. In the fall, especially with debris from cleaning up yards and then when the leaves fall, of course, it's a way to dispose of that stuff by allowing open burning during that timeframe. There's also state codes involved. The state code requires that you can only burn after five, has to be out by seven, just like it's in the resolution. You call the fire department and that lets us know that you're burning. We write down on a burn permit form the name, address, and phone number when somebody's going to burn. And that way, when a neighbor calls and says they see a fire on the next street over, we can look it up and know that somebody's burning and we don't send all the trucks out for that. So one thing about the ordinance is if the smoke from your fire interferes with someone else, so like during an inversion, you know, when you see the smoke laying flat, if that's causing health concerns to people, then we just come and ask people to put it out.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, so with that, may I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no? All right, very good, so moved. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Sure.
Number nine, appointment of council members to audit committee. So I'm going to ask interim recorder treasurer Jessica Chandler to comment more on this.
Sure. Okay, so we form an audit procurement committee every year in order to choose our auditor. This will be for the 23-24 audit year. The audit will be due by March 15th of '25. We have an RFP that we send out to all the CPA firms in West Virginia that are approved by the State Auditor's Office. Audit committee will meet to select the auditor for this fiscal year, once the bids are received. The audit committee has requirements by code of what we're allowed. We can have no less than three, but no more than five on the committee. The code defines several of the members, but there are two council members that are eligible as well. We have, the first member has to be somebody from the entity's governing body. This year, we're recommending the city manager take that spot. The second member is someone with working knowledge of the accounting system, so we were recommending the recorder treasurer for that spot. Ask for a citizen that is knowledgeable in the fields of accounting and auditing. In the past, we've asked Beverly Reinhardt Cook to take this position. She retired as a city controller here and has many years of city finances, so we recommend that she remains on the committee, and she's agreed to serve on it if appointed. We have one to two spots left for council members. We should have at least one council member on this committee, but we're allowed up to two. So if we have any council members that would be interested in being on this committee.
There you go, Nancy. Great job. Anybody else? Frank?
I'll do it.
There you go. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. All right, very good. So may I have a motion to approve the new members, Nancy and Frank, to the audit committee as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? So moved, thank you, council. All right, next on the agenda, appointment of interim city manager or designate to the Board of Directors for the New River Transit Authority. So I'm thinking that says, you know, our new interim city manager, Ann Worley over there, that you can appoint yourself or you can designate somebody else. So I don't know if you want to comment on that or you just want me to make the motion to...
You can make a motion, that's fine.
All right, may I have a motion, appoint interim city manager to the Board of Directors for the New River Transit Authority?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. May, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no? All right, thank you, council. Next up, the resolution for the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant from the West Virginia DMV in the amount of $364,900 for the Southern Regional Highway Safety Program. So I will read the resolution as, "Whereas the West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles has recently approved a grant in the amount of $364,900 for the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program, which monies will be used for the Southern Regional Highway Safety Program, and whereas the City of Beckley has been asked to enter the attached agreement with the State of West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles to apply, receive, and administer these grant funds. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Beckley that the recorder treasurer is hereby authorized to enter into the attached agreement with the West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles." Jessica, any comment on that?
Yes, I can tell you a little bit of information about the Highway Safety Program. So the first one we're looking at here, this one is administered by Jamie Willhite at our police department here. And it takes care of Boone, Braxton, Fayette, Greenbrier, Logan, Nicholas, Pocahontas, Raleigh, and Webster Counties. So it's far-reaching to the southern half of the state. So it is something that benefits many counties and we've administered for many years. So it can, it works toward doing target red programs, speed enforcement, DUI checks. It does a lot of good benefit for the citizens and the safety of our roadways.
Thank you, Jessica. So may I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Take a second? Anyone have any questions or comments for Jessica, any questions about it? If not, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? All right, so moved. Thank you again, Jessica. So again, there's another resolution, this is the resolution for the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant from the West Virginia DMV in the amount of $655,020 for the Law Enforcement Liaison Project. So I'll read that resolution. "Whereas the West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles has recently approved a grant in the amount of $655,020 for the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program, which monies will be used for the Law Enforcement Liaison Project, and whereas the City of Beckley has been asked to enter in the attached agreement with the State of West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles to apply, receive, and administer these grant funds. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Beckley that the recorder treasurer is hereby authorized to enter into the attached agreement with the West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles."
Okay, so the difference on the Law Enforcement Liaison Project, this serves the entire state, not just the region. It helps to train the officers, purchase the equipment they need for each region, radar detectors, e-situation products. It's very helpful statewide. And we administer it right here.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Anyone got any questions for Jessica on this one? No? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? All right, very good, so moved. Thank you, council. And then one more resolution. This is the resolution for the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant from the West Virginia DMV in the amount of $348,500 for the West Virginia Lifesavers and Data Tracking and Agency Support Projects. And I'll read that resolution. "Whereas the West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles has recently approved a grant in the amount of $348,500 for the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program, which monies will be used for the West Virginia Lifesavers and Data Tracking and Agency Support Projects, and whereas the City of Beckley has been asked to enter into the attached agreement with the State of West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles to apply, receive, and administer these grant funds. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Beckley that the recorder treasurer is hereby authorized to enter into the attached agreement with the West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles."
Okay. The Lifesavers and Data Tracking Grant also serves the entire state. It tracks the progress of the officers, results from checkpoints, DUIs, seatbelt tickets, and red light tickets, along with many other data tracking that they do. Kind of helps us know whether the grants are working or not.
All right. With that, may I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Jessica on this one? If not, all those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no? Very good, so moved. Thank you, council. We'll move on to old business. Does any council member, Janine, go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor. My friend Laverne Neal just wanted to thank you for coming out yesterday for their event at Pine Lodge. They had a community event, and she said they were just so excited to see you.
We were fun, did we not?
Yes, we did.
I enjoyed myself, it was fun.
We did. And I heard that there was Christmas on the roof one day this week with Chief Bailey and Mary West.
What was it?
Christmas on the roof.
Chief Bailey, you want to share that?
She's got a speed box.
Oh, my gosh. Can I stretch her out? Anyone else have your own business? Thank you, Janine.
You're welcome.
Yes, the situation on Level Street with the gentleman with the cord coming out, plugged up to his car, have anybody looked into that from the coding force or can you give me all information?
Yeah, it's still there. He's still got it plugged up. He's still got the Tesla plugged up with the extension.
He must have moved it back.
Yeah.
He must have moved it back, so I'll take care of it. He was told to move it back.
My car's not there.
Your car's not there?
My car has crossed the street.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's not there. That was just temporary, because we have that electrician with a foot charger at our warehouse. But we got that taken care of. We moved your car earlier. Yeah, yeah, it's still not wired yet, but it's, the electrician actually is, I'll say somewhere wired.
So the orange extension cord that's from the top window to the truck, was there Sunday? That's not going to be there?
The truck's not there, that's why.
It was there Sunday, so it won't be there? It was attached to the truck on Sunday?
Oh, yeah.
It was, correct? Right. So that's not going to be there any longer?
Well, let's put charge in, it's a destination. If the battery goes dead, it's like a lot of money, it's like $20,000, $30,000 if the battery goes dead. So I got it, if it goes dead, it's just...
Easier to put gas in it.
Okay, so the question is, is it still an operation or not still an operation? I'm confused. You saying you...
Well, it's not hooked up right this minute.
Oh, I understand, but it really don't supposed to be hooked up at all, am I correct?
Well, yeah, see, the problem is I'm having streetlights at my warehouse on that side of the foot charger store, and there's just a lot of riffraff over there. And I got a, that's something that's getting ready to happen.
But that's a hazard, right?
I don't think it's a hazard.
That's what I do. And I think it need to be moved.
All right, let's, you all look into it, right? Thank you, chief.
It won't be hooked up anymore there, it's not making an issue.
All right. Any other old business? Any other old business? Okay, great, we'll move on to new business. Any council members have any new business?
I have something again, Mayor. New business. This coming Tuesday, from 11 o'clock to 1:00, it's September the 17th, there's going to be an informational meeting at the East Beckley Post Office. And it's going to be just informational. I don't know if they're going to put a new post office there, or are they going to consider placing a post office somewhere else? And I just wanted to ask Ms. Pam Frye, some of my constituents have been asking about G Street and F Street paving, the rest of G Street and paving F, if you have an opportunity to do that. Okay. Okay. All right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would have, you've been on the job for what, five days?
Five days.
Ann?
Sure.
You want to give us an update?
Sure will. I would like to remind council members of the 9/11 ceremony tomorrow at Word Park at 9:30. Public also invited to that at Word Park at 9:30. Little house cleaning here, it's very rare, we get all, everybody together. At council meetings, it's appropriate to talk about things, you know, when we're all together. Pictures with Lieutenant Bragg for the website, please call him, I've got his number here. And bios are due, we want to keep our website up to date and current. And I'd like to ask the department heads now if they have any updates, anything they want to share about their departments. I know Kids Classic was this last weekend. Jill, would you like to share anything?
Just thanks to the community to pay now, thanks to all the events you had, if they set up a booth on Saturday or during the parade or when we outdid, it was great.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we had the comprehensive plan kind of walked through last night at the Armory, and a lot of people attended. It was well-received. Anybody else?
We started our DARE program this week, so we're pretty proud of that. It's always really well, it keeps me really excited, but there, things continue to go well with that.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, under new business, I want to thank Chief Bailey and his men and women over there. I know some of y'all probably seen my email over the weekend, the Old Dust Bowl across from Park Middle School, Greater Beckley has owned or leased that property since 2013 and done a lot of renovations and updates, and a lot of kids go on that field all throughout the year. And the last couple weeks, we've dealt with removing 25 separate people off that property that were living in the dugouts. And we found an encampment actually today between it and the old Institute Elementary. We think that's connected, but they came through and cut two layers of our fence in the right outfield to get through the property. We found over 12 syringes, a hatchet, a machete, all kinds of blades, aluminum foil. One object I posted on Facebook, it was a stick about that long, it had like two or three blades, like going in different directions, looked like somebody had designed a stab. And it's a real issue over there. I've had people reach out to me about, that are construction workers on the new park gym, and they're finding stuff every morning. But Chief Bailey and his men and women really stepped up and they've helped on that. And I can say, since Saturday, no one's been back on the field. Field's cleaned up at this point, and we just, we don't want at any instance of taking a kid stepping on a needle or touching a piece of aluminum foil, or, you know, even worse, a little kid out there playing while, you know, the brother or sister's playing softball or baseball, and, you know, they touch a weapon. It's sad that we have to worry about that. And I really would like to ask council to have a workshop and sit down and come up with some solutions of changing the downtown environment and making, you know, ordinances or whatever it may be to protect of what is entered into downtown, you know. I'm all for helping people and, you know, I know Day Center's been mentioned, and I know at the homeless shelter, we actually have a Day Center already up and operating. Me and Ms. Coutts have spoke about that. And, you know, I think that's a positive. But when you have these organizations that just more or less just hand out stuff every day, it becomes an enabling problem, in my opinion, where, you know, you can't help somebody unless they want to help you. And I feel like a lot of these resources and drug rehabs that have the high success rates are the ones that you have to want to enter, not just your family member or, you know, somebody getting grant money trying to pull you in. So I think, you know, we should really look into the future of working with these organizations that want to, you know, have clean people and, you know, and also I think the Greyhound bus stop is something we really need to look into to see if it's beneficial to our citizens anymore. I can't tell you the last time I've had a citizen tell me that them or a family member travels on the Greyhound. The only thing I ever hear about the Greyhound is it's a transportation for guns, drugs, and people that got kicked out of the city that they were at before. And that's just, I mean, my father personally had a pistol stolen out of his truck, and PD found it two weeks later, and it was an exchange from a guy who was coming here from Detroit with a bag of guns, and he was getting a bag of guns, or a bag of guns from somebody in West Virginia, swapping them for drugs and guns at the bus station. And the guy dropped his duffel bag, went running, and my father's pistol was found in, and the guy left his ID in it. Very smart, but I think that's something that we need to look to in the future of seeing if that's even something we need to be stopped in Beckley anymore. I mean...
I question why we have two runs directly from Detroit each week.
It's very concerning, definitely. That's why my next statement was going to be there's two runs every week from Detroit to Beckley, West Virginia. Why is that a thing? So if, I don't know what, what precautions or what we need to do, but I think eliminating the bus, the Greyhound bus station in Beckley seems like the next best thing to me.
On a positive note, yesterday when I was traveling down to the Carolinas, they, on the radio, they were, I heard some visit West Virginia ads, come see our fall callers, New River Gorge. So I thought that was positive, people coming.
Definitely, definitely.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to public comments. First up, Mary West.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Back again, but the first thing I want to say is thanks to the police department and everybody else that helped get that sign down there, but we also, there's a but, we also need one to control both sides of the street. And still need the speed bumps or cameras. And everybody's talking about the need of money in the city of Beckley, so why don't you put up cameras like everybody else and send it back to the police department and send them a ticket at their home address so they can put the pay board, that speed down that street. Now, the next thing is the comprehensive meeting last night. Now, city council, you guys are eyes and ears and our mouths. And I'm with shock, I didn't see a whole lot of you all out there at that meeting. So it happens every ten years, so you know, it should have been out there because that's the last one, last night. And all the stuff that we got going on in this city, we need to stay abreast of what's going on. And I've asked before for a sign to be put up there for the tractor and trailer that's coming down LaRue Avenue and I haven't seen that sign yet. Because I think that tractor and trailer, when it comes in, is dropping people off in the city of Beckley and coming out of my street, waking me up at three in the morning. Now, another thing, the alleyways. Now, you all are telling me that the city don't take care of the alleyways. Now, they took care of the alleyways all these years up until now. And no disrespect, Mr. File, but we need to look in the city files and not in bill files. Because the city has taken care of these alleyways. And they were just down there about three years ago and trimmed up the trees and things down there.
Thirty seconds.
They don't take care of. So they need to be taken care of and not just on my street everywhere. This city beginning to look like a, it's already ready for the apocalypse to come and we have the zombies walking through the bushes. So you all take care and help us out, please.
Mary, I want to thank you for coming to the comprehensive plan meeting last night. Thank you, Mary, for being there, appreciate it.
Thank you for having, so I put a T.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, James Freeman.
Hello, city council and everybody. My name is James Freeman. I just want to introduce myself. I purchased the building at three thirty-seven Neville Street and I want to make sure that I connect with the city and some of the things that you're doing from the revitalization standpoint, make sure I'm in line with what you all are doing and some of the ideas to have for that building and also stuff I hope to do in the future. So just want to introduce myself, have a little bit more information later on in the future.
I appreciate it, thank you, James.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Christina Basin? I don't know, but I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Sure will.
Christina Baze did.
Good job, Brian.
Uh, the first thing I want to say is that I commend you, Sherri Hunter, for coming forward and thinking of our children. That should have been at the forefront of this entire plan from the very beginning. I'm very disappointed that your amendment did not pass tonight, but I also want to give an ask to each one of these council and the mayor and especially our at large to send a letter of support to the commission for these kids and ask them to facilitate a meeting so we can get this worked out on a county level and since we could not accomplish that tonight. I also want to talk about how the legacy of the last administration has been an absolute dumpster fire for you all. And for you all to come in and have to deal with all of this eleventh hour stuff is ridiculous. And I think it's convenient that we use litigation when it's convenient. If we truly cared about litigation within the city of Beckley, then we would be adamant about following the West Virginia Meetings Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Christina.
Tom Mosley.
Good evening. Bear with me, I'm a little hoarse. I know as of last Thursday, it was on the workshop about panhandling and some of that issue. I do want to ask you not to rush into an ordinance about safety. I have talked with several members of council, I've talked with their mayor quite a bit. I'm going to ask this council to put on the agenda a safety commission. A lot of things you were talking about with needles and finding all of this stuff, that can be handled. You know, we keep talking, 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 but until we take a step forward, can we progress? So that's what I want to ask you to do, to put this on the agenda. If it's a bad idea, we'll vote it out or you'll vote it out. If it's not, let's make it happen.
I think, Tom, I think that we have drafted part of it.
Okay.
But it's a really rough draft.
Okay.
We understand it's important and we want to do it to clean up our city.
Right. And I appreciate all of you and the input back and forth, you know. We want to do everything we can to help. And then lastly, Mr. File, I want to see if you got my text the other day about possibly getting a citizen award for Greg Stovall and also for Scott Worley.
I did, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, next up, Maya Panta.
Hi, everyone. I am a runner, uh, I'm a runner for cross country at Woodrow Wilson High School and I'm here today to fight to preserve the course in Pine Crest Industrial Park. During my first year of cross country, I was given a jar of dirt to remember all of the memories that I made on the course and since then, my team and I have made so many more memories. This course is important to us. We had early mornings, late evenings, workouts, progress and our first meets here. It is a matter of extreme pride to me that I am able to start every season off racing at the home course in Beckley. We don't just want this course, it's become a part of us. However, I'm not only here to speak for Woodrow Wilson cross country runners. I'm speaking for runners at Park Middle School, like my little brother. I'm speaking for runners from Beckley Stratton, like some of my teammates. I'm speaking for the football players, the cheerleaders, the elementary and the middle school students that I see practicing there every single day. But most importantly, I'm speaking for the children yet to come, for their ability to make their own memories in their time. I urge all of the council members to join us for the children yet to come and save our course. Thank you and a special thank you to Congress, to Councilwoman Hunter for considering us and making an effort to fight for us.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Mangrin. Did I say that right?
Good evening. I am Zimanran, the captain of Woodrow Wilson High School's girls' cross country team. Each year during the cross country season, we run hundreds of miles on our course at Beckley Stratton Middle School. To me and all of my teammates, this course is where we challenge ourselves, both physically and mentally. But more importantly, this course is also where we share our best laughs and where our friendships flourish. I'm sure this does not only apply to us, like Maya has said, but also to middle school football teams and cross country teams, which also use this course for sports practice. Taking away this land for economic development will also take away opportunities for many students. During the three years I've run for Woodrow, I've gotten to know some of the best runners and athletes on that course. Each year, it marks the start of another good season for the team. Please do not make this season the last time. Thank you.
Teresa Dennison.
Hey, y'all.
Hello.
Hello.
I know, I'm thankful for a lot. I'm thankful for Ms. Mary West coming in here every week and asking for y'all to start praying at the beginning of these and the county has, you know, they, they do something like that and so I'm going to pray. And I hope that y'all will join me. Lord, we ask that you be with everyone here tonight and all the families represented and, and all the missions that are being brought forward and we are thankful for the, everyone on the council, every man and woman and their willingness to serve and our, our county and community and city. We ask that you enlighten us to your will, Lord. We ask that you help us as we move forward to enact laws that follow God's law and not man's law or man's feelings or anything like that, Lord. And you know, just continue to convict me to try to be involved more and I ask that more strong Christian, bold people will step forward and help, help lead. We love you, Lord. We thank you, Jesus. It's in your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Teresa. Hey, on that note, sir, oh, you had something else?
Oh, yeah.
Let me just ask real quick, what, it's been brought up a few times about prayer at city. What, what is the law, the rule, the, I mean, is it up to the city? Is it, who makes that decision?
I don't make that decision, certainly. I think you can have prayer. I think if you have prayer in a public place, it's supposed to be a prayer that different denominations, different beliefs are entitled to.
Okay.
To have their, you know, their time also.
Before COVID, a different pastor would come in every meeting and he would open, he or she would open up in a prayer. That's how it used to be in the COVID kind of.
Sorry, Teresa, go ahead.
No, I appreciate you. Um, thank you, Ms. Hunter, for trying. I was shocked that, like, I don't even know about this issue, but it seems like business interest always seems to take the forefront here and step on whoever to get, get them out of your way. I mean, I, I don't know enough to even speak about it, but I appreciate all the kids and the young people that came to speak about that. I'm going to try to learn more and I think we all should. I'm not sure. I, I'm tired of the panhandling. I'm tired of not feeling safe when I'm in town, can't go to the certain sheets. You know, we all joke about it, but people come up to you in the Kroger parking lot out at Beckley Crossing. I mean, it's everywhere, you know, and like, y'all need to carry. I mean, everybody should be still carrying at this point, you know, because we have to protect our families and, but I mean, I feel like there could be more done. I'm not even sure what it is, but I appreciate y'all looking at it. Ms. Gano, I appreciated her presentation and you asking questions about it. I, I feel like a lot of times
Thirty seconds.
These programs come in to the schools and they are veiled under this gender confusion information and it, you know, it needs to stop. They're, they need to be educating our kids. If you want to help them with drugs, that's fine, but don't be bringing up the gender confusion issues with our kids and calling it social emotional learning. And it is going on in Raleigh County. I follow a lot of that. But I appreciate trying to pull that out because it's veiled and we can't tell what's going on because they, you know, they have all these feel-good words, but thank y'all so much. I appreciate it.
Tony Martin.
Hello, Mayor, Council and all of these wonderful citizens out here. Do you see what I see right here when I look at all these purple shirts? It's community pride. Something we've been lacking. I also see the city of champions and it makes me question, is that a motto or is that who we are? Right? Community development, community investment is economic development, whether you believe it or not. When we start improving the quality of life of our citizens, this is when we'll see that economic development we've been waiting on. And what I see, a couple of weeks ago and right now, with all these teachers, we got Woodrow's principal right there. Mr. Ballslick, I remember him from my days in school, right? No, not too long ago at all, right? So my thing is this, every deed to every piece of land comes with some kind of covenants. We haven't heard what those covenants are. We don't know if this is impossible. The county has what we call ARPA funds, right? Is that, is that how you pronounce it, Mr. File? What these are are funds from the American Rescue Plan, signed by President Biden. These funds can be used for things such as economic development, infrastructure, this whole list of things that our county needs, I was going to open it up on my phone, that I could pull out that these funds could be used for. So what we're being led to believe right now is that the county's going to let these funds expire in three months if they don't get this Pine Crest land exactly the way they want it. It's hard for me to believe that because we've got sewer systems in the county that that money can be used for. But right now, they're eager and they want the city of Beckley to move on this fast so that we can put those funds to work on this development. So what I'm saying to you, council, is it's not often that our citizens stand up the way they've been doing the last month or so. And I've seen these kids and these teachers, they take pride in that piece of land that they have over there. So I give kudos to my councilwoman sitting right there. Y'all know who she is. Y'all know who she is, Ms. Sherri Hunter. I give kudos to her for her political courage to stand up and make this happen for our school system.
Thank you.
So I hope that the rest of our members will do just that. Thank you for your time.
Amanda Hammonds and Robert Dunland.
Hello, council and city of Beckley. I just came to follow up on the Day Center subject. I wanted to clarify a little bit that I started this conversation after speaking to many organizations that have already offered services in this community for years. And the beginning of that sentence was the consistent and growing numbers. So these individuals that we're talking about focusing in on are not getting consistent enough resources because of how sparse, how far away, how limited they are. Grants come down with statistics that are put up and then they continue to be returned because of that. If we can't give those resources to the people that need, which means they're not being served, then we don't get those again and then these organizations dwindle off, resources die, they're not able to serve the people any longer. This was intended to be by the city, for the city, to solve that issue so that local organizations could rotate out of it to make a more lasting impact on the individuals that are obviously offering some type of disturbance to the city, causing problems in their own lives, maybe feel threatened and alone. They're not able to get to these resources, they wouldn't be here in the first place, wandering around asking for help. You know, I don't know how, how else to better say that because I mean, I am for the people that I'm talking about. But I want to let you know that the concerns are being heard and I invite the community and council to please come share comments so that we can involve what the city thinks would be best for not only the people, but for the city. You know, adjustments can be made, conversations can be had. We have a meeting actually every Tuesday at five o'clock. So it's, it's open for conversation on how we feel like we could adjust this to best serve an ongoing issue. Thank you.
There has been a lot of outcry and it's legitimate, the concerns are legitimate. And I do listen to constituents. I, I think that we might need to talk a little bit more about the concerns from council at an appropriate time.
Yes, I would, I would love that. I would actually just like to invite conversation because, believe it or not, this was actually a concern of the city and of the community and this was a solution to that problem, not another problem. That's not, that's not what we're here today for.
And realistically, nothing about the Day Center, Pine Crest, does anything to address the ten people.
the ten people you see milling around uptown. They're not going to walk all the way to Pinecrest to stand there at a day center there. They're going to continue being in the park. And in four years, we did nothing, we were able to do nothing to mitigate those folks. This drop-in center would allow something uptown for those individuals so that they wouldn't be an eyesore. We had nothing to address that in four years, and you won't have anything else to address that in four years. They're not going to walk all the way to Johnstown Road to canoodle over in, in the shelter. However, we also are good neighbors and mindful of the community and spoke with the good neighbors on Main Street and already found a different location. We want to be responsive to your constituents' concerns, but we also don't want to treat people like cockroaches and think if we take away food and resources, they'll magically go away. That's, that's not really a realistic endeavor. We have to take care of people. If we're going to support Christian ideals, I think we were supposed to feed people, to take care of their health needs. We were supposed to look after one another. And ma'am, I'm not talking about the individuals we've all encountered at Walmart.
Right.
I, I'm talking about the center would allow us the ability to start identifying
Thirty seconds.
what these individuals need and how we can serve either their, their mental health issues, their needs for food.
It took me six months to almost a year to make an impact, and I can name seven people that have not given me the right to do so, that are now either in treatment, went back to their families, or reside in Raleigh County as effective member of the society. I would love to have an opportunity to share those conversations with you at a later time.
And it's a conversation.
Thank you.
We've already made a major change just in the location because of your concerns, Mr. Reed. And that's.
Where do you meet on Tuesday?
At Carpenter's Corner.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Robert. Absolutely. All right, next, anticipated executive session to discuss city manager candidates. Mr. File, you want to comment on this before I call for a motion?
Yes, we do need to, if, if it's the will of the council, we do need to go into executive session to discuss the candidates. We're now in the posture where the council will be interviewing the candidates. We need to discuss who the candidates are and qualifications. And I would ask that you ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Very good, Mr. File. Thank you. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Very well.
And I might add, there'll be no decisions made tonight when we come out there. There will have to be a, a motion to adjourn this meeting. That's the only thing that we're.
Stay here or go back there?
We can go back and.
My office is set up for you all.
There's still a lot of people here. Maybe quicker.